Fifth is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for bringing us together safely this evening and for the many blessings we enjoy. We ask that you bring our nation together in peace. Let us engage one another without hatred or bitterness and work together with mutual respect. We give thanks for sparing our city from senseless tragedies that we've become so accustomed to. We pray for those who are suffering and mourn the loss of loved ones. As we serve the residents of our fine city, please guide us with the dedication and commitment for the betterment of all, in your holy name. Amen.
I'd also like a moment of silence for the Repay family. Commissioner Repay lost his mother and also I lost a cousin Kathy Goodman, who was funeralized on last Saturday at New Hope Church, so if you could please bow for a moment of silence. Thank you so much.
Okay, clerk Golick roll call vote please.
Markovich, here. Spatelli.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect nine thousand zero absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
The motion is accepted minutes from October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen and be placed on file.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes of the October fifteenth meeting and place them on file. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, October tenth, twenty eighteen through October thirty-first, twenty eighteen, for council meeting November fifth, twenty eighteen, beginning reclaim's date at ten-ten-eighteen and ending reclaim's date at ten-thirty-one-eighteen. Claim number six-two-zero-eight through claim number six-six-five-one for a total of twelve million ninety-eight thousand two-hundred-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs for approval of claims from December, uh, I'm sorry, October tenth through October thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Claim sixty-two-eighty-three is for the senior disabled tax rebate, which is given by the mayor. I applaud his efforts in regards to our seniors. They need all assistance they can get. It's not about me, but it's about us.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to have claim number six-five-four-three for a traffic insurance company, self-insurance for twelve thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. It appears there's a discrepancy there on the dates of when this incident or whatever has happened. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs. You want to pull claim number sixty-five-four-three?
Six-five-four-three, correct.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
What's the total amount, Councilman Markovich, for that particular claim?
Twelve thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirteen cents.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I ask what's wrong, just for informational purposes?
I'm sorry.
What's wrong with that claim? I don't, I was.
Uh, there's two different dates listed on there, January twenty-sixth, eighteen and July eighteen-eighteen, so there's two different dates for as far as, uh, whatever happened.
Did you see anything on there? Okay, all right. We'll, we'll get it next.
Okay.
We'll just get it to the next council.
Thank you.
All righty. Um, motion by Councilman Markovich to pull claim number sixty-five-four-three in the amount of, uh, twelve thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Uh, second by Councilman Higgs. Uh, clerk, do I need a roll call vote on that?
Yes.
All righty. Uh, roll call vote clerk Golick to pull claim number six-five-four-three.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Nine in favor, zero opposed for pulling the claim. Now for, uh, claims as written. Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Madam Chairlady. If I may, I need to add, amend and add three more claims, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, so, uh...
I make a motion to reopen approval of claims. I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to reopen the claims. Uh, do I need a roll call vote on that clerk?
No.
No, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, Councilman Markovich.
Madam Chairlady, I'd like to add claim number six-six-five-two. St. Casimir School Corporation, St. Casimir School, donation from Councilman Kalwinski for a dinner dance, two hundred dollars. Claim number six-six-five-three from Councilman Kalwinski, Hammond Mohawks, to Thanksgiving Dinner for the servicemen that they have visiting in town. And claim number six...
In the amount?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two hundred dollars. Hammond Mohawks, forty-forty Calumet Avenue.
Uh, Councilman Markovich, is that correct?
Yes, two hundred dollars, Hammond Mohawks.
Thank you.
And in claim number six-six-five-four, Whiting's Lions Club, fifty dollars from Councilman Kalwinski for their Christmas party for special needs children.
In the amount?
Fifty dollars.
All righty. All righty, um, there's a motion by Councilman Markovich to, and did I miss again, uh, add the claims?
I...
Okay, Councilman Higgs, uh, to amend in claim number six-six-five-two to St. Casimir in the amount of two hundred dollars, claim number six-six-five-three to the Mohawks in the amount of two hundred dollars, and six-six-five-four to the Whiting Lions, uh, in the amount of fifty dollars. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
And Vanez.
Yes. Amended claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Madam Chairlady, question, do we have to approve the claims as amended again or not?
I was just going to ask that. Clerk Golick, do I have to go back and, uh, approve the claims as amended?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay. There we go, that answers that. Now for claims as amended. Clerk Golick, roll call vote please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to new public hearings, there are none. Communications.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'm going to read an ordinance that was submitted and given to this council some years back from Kathleen Pasodick, Councilwoman at large, and Robert Markovich, Councilman at large, ordinance eighty-six-twenty, said, "Ordinance to establish a residency requirement for the Hammond employees, ask amended. Whereas many municipalities, including the city of Chicago, require that employees maintain residency within the municipality boundaries, and whereas the municipalities enacting the this requirement benefit from diminishing tardiness, absenteeism among municipal employees, and whereas the citizens in the municipalities with residency requirements benefit from the immediate availability of trained employees in emergency situations, whereas residents and employees possess greater personal knowledge of the municipality concerns and conditions and would have a greater personal stake in the city development and improvement, and whereas businesses located in municipalities with residency requirements would benefit from local expenditures of residents' employee salaries, and whereas resident employees possess a greater interest in the, in the pursuit of expenditures of their own property and tax dollars. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Hammond that's section one, all employees of the city Hammond shall reside and dis- 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 dis-
Children that night in the rain and it was just a blast. So, thank you to everyone and um, that's because community is not just about me. It's about us. Committee reports is now closed. Moving on.
Oh, wait a minute. I have something for committee reports.
Alrighty.
You didn't ask.
You want to reopen it again?
Yes, please.
Is that a motion?
I guess, I mean if you closed it, you didn't ask for closing for three, three questions.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to reopen.
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yes, um, we had to make some changes to some of our council meetings. So, instead of the nineteenth of November, we're gonna have a council meeting on the twentieth. And I'd like to have a committee meeting of the council as a whole, an executive session, to consider personnel and litigation, right? Immediately following the council meeting on the twentieth. I so move.
Second.
Okay, so you want to schedule an executive session on Tuesday, November twentieth? Immediately following the council meeting to discuss um, personnel and uh, litigation?
Correct. The council as a whole.
Okay. Well, if it's an executive session, that's all of us.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Okay. Alrighty, and uh, okay, that's motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman uh, Higgs, to schedule an executive session on Tuesday, November twentieth, uh, following the council meeting to discuss um, uh, personnel and litigation. Uh, Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich, yes. Spatelli. Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple. Rakos.
No.
Vanez.
No.
Uh, motion passes, six in favor, zero, uh, three opposed, um, motion carries. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final passage, there are none. Introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. An ordinance to create fund two fifty-four and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for two thousand eighteen nineteen.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
Move through first and second reading, refer to the Finance Committee. That's a public hearing set for twelve, ten, eighteen, and a meeting at five fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson, uh, for first and second reading of ordinance number eighteen twenty-four with a Finance Committee meeting on uh, December tenth at five fifteen P.M. And a public hearing uh, on December tenth. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to be a co-sponsor of this great, wonderful ordinance.
Alrighty, Clerk Golick, you have him added. Alrighty, thank you. Do you have your cellphone off?
My phone is off.
Thank you.
It's on fire break.
Alrighty.
Thank you so much for saying about my phone.
Well, it was interrupting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, mister.
Okay, um, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item B, ordinance eighteen dash twenty-five, sponsored by Councilman Warple. An ordinance creating a new fund, fund number two seventy-five, for the City of Hammond Fire Department for grant funds.
Madam President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for ordinance eighteen twenty-five to pass on first and second reading and send it to Finance Committee on eleven twenty at five P.M.
Motion by Councilman Warple, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Rakos, I believe that was.
No, it was Councilman.
I seconded it, yes.
Thank you very much.
I didn't.
For first and second reading of ordinance number eighteen twenty-five, refer to the Finance Committee, uh, with a meeting on November twentieth at five P.M. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Is this the first time this fund has been established in the Fire Department?
And your question is to the sponsor?
Whoever sponsors the ordinance.
Madam President.
Councilman, uh, Warple.
It'll be discussed in committee, but yes, it's the, we wouldn't be creating the fund if it already existed.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so there was a motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakos, uh, to refer ordinance number eighteen twenty-five, uh, on first and second reading to the Finance Committee, uh, to meet on November twentieth at five P.M. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
So exactly what is this ordinance supposed to do, since we're under communications?
We're not under communications, but go ahead.
Madam President.
Yes, we are. Go ahead.
Oh, wow.
We're under introduction of ordinances, and again, this is a Finance Committee hearing set up for November twentieth at five P.M. These questions can be asked and answered. All this does is set up a line item, number two seventy-five, on the budget for the Hammond Fire Department, to be able to put their grant funds in. It doesn't give them any money right now or anything, it creates the account for the grant funds.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
As I stated previously, when you ask questions, it seems to be a problem. I thought it was all our legislative duties to ask questions and find out information as it relates to any functions in the City of Hammond. So, I don't know why my colleagues are being so offended by me asking questions. Just answer the question and move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that commentary. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, ordinance eighteen dash twenty-six, sponsored by Councilman Warple. An ordinance creating a non-reverting fund, fund number two five eight, for Hammond Fire Department donations.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for first and second reading, put it in Finance, with a five P.M. meeting on November twentieth.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakos, for first and second reading of ordinance number eighteen twenty-six, referring to Finance Committee meeting on November twentieth at five P.M.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
In case the question's asked, no, there is no fund that allows Fire Department donations to be donated into, that's why we're creating this fund. And again, it's just creating the line item, a line item two fifty-eight in the budget for the Hammond Fire Department to put their donations into their line item.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I want to thank Councilman Warple for being so polite and letting us know exactly what it pertains. Thank you so much.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Can you tell Councilman Higgs I said thank you? You're welcome.
We all appreciate his commentary. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, ordinance eighteen dash twenty-seven, sponsored by Councilman Rakos. An ordinance to create a new section of Chapter ninety-three, the Fire Prevention, regarding maintenance of privately owned fire hydrants in Hammond.
Madam President.
Madam President.
Uh, Councilman Rakos, you are the sponsor of this ordinance?
I move for first and second.
Second.
On eighteen dash twenty-seven.
Alrighty, Councilman Rakos.
Is there a committee?
Be a committee meeting at five fifteen.
What's the committee?
On the, the Police and Fire Committee, five fifteen on the twentieth.
Alrighty, motion by Councilman Rakos for first and second reading of ordinance number eighteen twenty-seven, referring to Police and Fire with a meeting on November twentieth at five fifteen, and there was a second by Councilman Higgs. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
This particular ordinance pertains to fire hydrants on property by property owners in regards so that the Fire Department will have a easy access in terms of addressing fires, and if there's an issue with the fire hydrant, they can utilize that hydrant in making sure that it's inspected so the general public is safe and our city is safe. Thank you for this particular ordinance. It helps our citizens.
Councilman Rakos, do you have anything to add to that?
No, we'll, we can discuss it in committee.
Alrighty, terrific. Um, any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
President Vanez, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution eighteen R dash thirty-eight, sponsored by Councilman Warple. A resolution requesting the Indiana Gaming Commission and the Indiana General Assembly allowing transfer to Hammond, Indiana, of a gaming license.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for adoption of Resolution eighteen R thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs, for final passage of eighteen R thirty-eight. Any discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
Can we have the clerk read this resolution in its entirety so everybody knows what's going on here?
Oh, wow. Whereas in nineteen ninety-four, the Indiana Gaming Commission issued two gaming licensed casinos to be located in the City of Gary, Indiana, and in nineteen ninety-six, two riverboats opened in that city at Buffington Harbor, and whereas, Indiana law was later expanded and changed to allow for ten riverboat casinos, including the successful Horseshoe Casino in Hammond, Indiana. Whereas, in two thousand fifteen, the Indiana General Assembly allowed for further gaming expansion and permitted land-based casinos to be located in the state of Indiana. And whereas, due to a transfer of ownership, Majestic Star now holds both gaming licenses in the City of Gary, one of which cannot be transferred or sold without a change in Indiana law. And whereas, the Majestic Star, the boats and facilities are nearing the end of their life expectancy, and Majestic Star wishes to move one of its licenses to a land-based location near Interstate eighty ninety-four and sixty-five, to replace aging boats and facilities at Buffington Harbor, and which project the City of Hammond supports as a transfer of a single license from Buffington Harbor to a land-based location. And whereas, since the last census, Hammond has become the largest city in Lake County in terms of population. And whereas, the Hammond, Indiana Horseshoe Casino continues to lead Lake County and most of Indiana casinos in terms of visitors and revenues, drawing much of its revenues from Illinois customers, based on its strategic location near the Illinois border. And whereas, the state of Indiana would benefit from the location of a second casino in Hammond, Indiana, by ways of increased tax revenue. And whereas, the City of Hammond currently possesses the land, the population, the capital and the interstate customer base to support a second casino within the city limits. And whereas, the Hammond Common Council and Hammond Thomas McDermott Mayor wish to express the desire for and firmly request the Indiana General Assembly of Indiana Gaming Commission to transfer to the City of Hammond the second casino license, which is currently located in the City of Gary, Indiana, but will soon become unused, be it therefore resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond and the City of Hammond requests the Indiana Gaming Commission and the Indiana General Assembly pass legislation allowing the City of Hammond, Indiana, to obtain their current unused gaming license located in the City of Gary, Indiana, be it further resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the Common Council, signing by the President thereof and approval by the mayor.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Um, as it states in what Clerk Golick wrote, I just want to state that for the record, that this isn't taking anything away from Gary. This isn't like, hey, give us that. It's my understanding that Buffington Harbor is gonna be made a, um, I forget the name of it, like a transfer.
Intermodal facility.
Right, like a, um.
Could I back up?
Go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Councilman Warple's right, there's not, there's two licenses at Buffington Harbor for two separate boats, but really, it's sort of silly that there's two licenses there. And Gary's been shopping, the idea is, the General Assembly needs to get involved to change the law, the Gaming Commission needs to get involved to change the law that allows the casino to move away from Buffington Harbor. Right now, the law in Indiana is, even Horseshoe could build a land-based casino right now. It has to be on their current footprint of land that they own. So, if Horseshoe wanted to build a land-based casino right now, they could do it legally, they'd just have to do it in the Hammond Marina, on real property at the Hammond Marina, okay? Same with the Maristar, they could build on land at their location, same with Michigan City or any other boat in Indiana, and a couple of, in fact, French Lick is straight up on the land. It was always, but, anyway. So, what Gary wants Indiana to do is change the law that says you don't have to build it on the footprint, you can move it. And that changes everything. That changes Hammond's competitive advantage, that changes the way we do business, there's been billions of dollars invested in the gaming industry based on the premise that this is where you operate and they can't move. So, Gary's asking for a real big deal, going back to Councilman Warple's point, their rationale is, we have an opportunity to make Buffington Harbor an intermodal facility, okay? They're not talking about how much investment needs to be made at Buffington Harbor to create an intermodal facility. I imagine that's nine figures, okay? They have to do breakwalls, they have to do all kinds of stuff. We're not talking about that. What they're talking about is, we want to create an intermodal facility here and we want to move our casino licenses, both of them. We want to create one land-based casino in Gary, and then the other one, they're saying Indiana, you could shop it around. Because they don't, Gary doesn't need two licenses, is what they're saying. And, and this has gone far, this started in two thousand twelve and it's developed since then. Communities that are interested in this license, Terre Haute has expressed interest, uh, Fort Wayne has expressed interest, Indianapolis has expressed interest, and if we pass this resolution, Hammond has expressed interest. And by the way, there's another community in Northwest Indiana, Portage, that's considering a resolution very like thi, very much like this. I imagine it's Hammond and Portage aren't gonna be the only two cities in Indiana that are putting in for the extra gaming license. So, I go, I agree with Councilman Warple. Gary's not losing anything. Gary's gonna get, if it works out right for Gary, if it's, this is allowed, Indiana General Assembly has to pass it, Gary will get a new casino and possibly an intermodal facility at Buffington Harbor. And if it works out right for Hammond, Hammond would get a new casino. I imagine our new casino would probably build a hotel. I imagine it'd be a good location in our city and it could be anywhere. It could be anywhere. It's land-based, it doesn't have to be on the water. So, I'm willing to answer questions about this resolution.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
First of all, thanks Mayor for explaining and being here at our council meeting, being informed is very positive.
This is important, Councilman Higgs.
The reality of it is, is that additional casino would generate additional revenue for our city. With the caps coming, uh, in the near future, uh, it's gonna affect not just Hammond, Gary, Chicago and surrounding cities. So, the ability to have, generate additional businesses in our city is a profit, is a win, although Gary is in a financial situation where they also need some stability in terms of getting new businesses there. I would hope that, uh, in the near future, uh, something of this nature, if it's nothing but horse track bedding or something of that nature comes to Hammond for additional revenue, because Hammond's gonna be hurting in the near future with the tax caps. So, um, I don't think it's a bad idea and I don't want the, uh, impression to think that someone's trying to snatch anything from Gary, but I do understand their plight and I understand what they're dealing with in terms of revenue resources, so.
Madam Chair, can I respond?
Yes.
I think Councilman Higgs bring up, brings up a couple of really good points, and I want to say something that's hard for us to wrap our head around, but I'm gonna say it. Hammond's the biggest gaming city in Indiana. The biggest, by far. We have the best boat, we would create the best money, we have the best agreement with our boat, quite frankly, we have the best relationship. Horseshoe Casino and the City of Hammond are tight. We work together on almost every issue. We don't necessarily see eye to eye on this issue, I'll acknowledge, but our job is to watch out for the City of Hammond, and that's what we're doing with this resolution. Hammond is the biggest gaming city in Indiana. So, if Indiana's looking to shop this second license around, wouldn't they want to put it in a location that creates the most revenue for the state of Indiana? I would. That's why I think this is a good resolution, and I'm urging and begging and hoping this council could show solidarity in this. I think a nine-zero vote hopefully sends a signal to Indianapolis that this is an important issue and we're all marching together, because I agree, Councilman Higgs, next year's budget, as tough as this year's budget was, next year's budget, when the full force of the tax caps kick in, it's gonna be even tighter than this year's budget was. And I can imagine if there's another Horseshoe Casino creating another twenty-five or thirty million dollars in Hammond, that would go a long way to helping us with our infrastructure issues and our budget issues. I think this would be amazing windfall for our city, and I, I hope we're all behind it. And I promise you, if this is passed, I will send it to everybody. I'll send it to the General Assembly, I'll send it to the Gaming Commission, I'll send it to the Governor, I'll send it to everybody, so they know where we all stand on this issue and we will be the first community in Indiana that's vying for this second license.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman.
This will be.
Not used to getting applause.
Finally says something. This will, um, attract other businesses, like hotels, maybe other restaurants, stores, so if we are lucky enough to.
Can I respond? Do you mind, Councilman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Interesting, because one of the frustrations with the current situation in Hammond, not that, we're the most blessed city in Indiana, okay? But Horseshoe, for financial reasons, they don't want to build a hotel. They don't need to build a hotel, they're killing it. If there was a second location in Hammond and they were competing with Horseshoe for the same dollars, I have a feeling, we may not only get a new casino and a hotel, I have a feeling Horseshoe revisits that issue and maybe they build a hotel as well. I mean, this could be a major windfall, echoing your point, Councilman.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
If I could, Heather, if you could probably answer this question, what was the total amount of revenue that Horseshoe?
I could answer it. Around thirty-five million dollars here.
Thirty-six, to be exact.
Thank you.
I watch the numbers.
Thank you. Good job, Councilman Higgs.
Madam Chair, I'm being the sponsor, I think I'll have the last word on this.
Yes, thank you.
First of all, I knew that, it was intermodal, that was the word I was looking for, I was on the roll until I fumbled there.
It's always right there.
But I think it would be irresponsible knowing that there's a second license out there that they're gonna be basically saying, like the Amazon bid, more or less, and I think it'd be irresponsible of us to be sitting right next to them and not say, hey, we want that.
Absolutely. Alrighty, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Eighteen, uh, R thirty-eight passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank, thank you very much. I promise to get this in everybody's hands tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item B, Resolution eighteen R dash thirty-nine, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. A resolution authorizing the exception from application of ordinance eighty-six twenty.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakos.
Make motion to pass Resolution eighteen R thirty-nine.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakos, second by Councilman, uh, Warple, for approval of Resolution eighteen R thirty-nine. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, Clerk Golick, can you read this in its entirety, please?
Whereas the Hammond Common Council passed ordinance eighty-six twenty on November twenty-third, two thousand four, entitled, "An Ordinance to Establish a Residency Requirement for Hammond Employees," has amended, and whereas, such ordinance states that all new employees of the City of Hammond shall reside and be domiciled in Hammond, continue to reside in Hammond, and any employee seeking a voluntary promotion or transfer within the city shall reside and be domiciled in the city. And whereas, the Hammond Common Council, as a result of a retirement, has a position open which it needs to fill, and whereas, the Hammond Common Council President wishes to fill the position with an employee of the Court Clerk's Office who held that position prior to the institution of ordinance eighty-six twenty and is therefore grandfathered into that position. And whereas, as the Hammond City Court is closing, such transfer is not voluntary and will not constitute a transfer in violation of ordinance eighty-six twenty, and therefore be it resolved by the Hammond Common Council that Section One, Application, ordinance eighty-six twenty is not violated by the proposed transfer to the vacancy occurring in the Hammond Common Council Office, and Section Two, Effectiveness, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and shall not be applicable to any other promotion or transfer.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'm just, um, so, um, in disbelief now, all of a sudden, they're bare, it seems as though, uh, a new secretary is needed so badly, but in reality, when I initially brought it up, it was just overlooked, it was like I was talking a foreign language. However, um, certainly we do need another secretary in our office, and if you're wanting to know the truth, a raise should be given to the secretary for the outstanding work they do. And to go a little further, our former secretary, Debbie Jimenez, who did an excellent job as a secretary here in the council office, has been hospitalized, she's had a couple of strokes, and her mother told me none of the colleagues had been to see her. But needless to say, uh, she did a wonderful job, and, and I feel it's important that we have two secretaries here in the office to effect those secretaries that's gonna do the job, and hopefully, the job will be done properly and efficiently to serve all of us.
Madam President.
Madam Chair, can I say something real quick?
Yes.
I'm not trying to disrespect the council, there's some executives here from the data center.
Oh, okay.
They have business after this very contentious issue, and I was wondering if possibly we could relocate their debate before this very contentious issue, so that these gentlemen that are getting paid a lot of money could possibly go do other business, I'm sure that they have, and then we could have this very contentious issue right afterwards.
Alrighty.
Eighteen R forty-five.
Because this is, I know what's coming and I know why we're gonna have this.
Madam Chairlady.
I'd prefer not to have a huge audience if we don't have to.
Make a motion to go to new and unfinished business.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, to go to. Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to go to new and unfinished business so we can hear Resolution number eighteen R forty-one. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez. Yes. Motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Clerk Golick, Resolution number eighteen R forty-one, please.
The petitioners, the Hammond Plan Commission and the Hammond Redevelopment Commission, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, determining and approving Plan Commission Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero-two, as the written order approving Redevelopment Commission Resolution Number twelve dash two thousand eighteen, as an amending declaratory resolution that amended the declaratory resolution and subsequent amended declaratory resolutions, more specifically, Resolution Number zero-seven dash two thousand seventeen, in order to amend further the allocation provision of the state line allocation area to include and designate the depreciable personal property of a designated taxpayer for the purpose of utilizing tax increment financing to implement the redevelopment plan for the Marina Development Area as a redevelopment project area in the Hammond Redevelopment District.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
Motion for passage of eighteen R dash forty-one.
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passage of eighteen R forty-one. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
If I could have the pleasure of Councilman Kalwinski, let, enlighten us on exactly what that particular ordinance is going to do in your lovely district.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
Eighteen R dash forty-one, the resolution. This is another step in the process for the issuance of the bond for a TIF allocation area for the data center in my district, in the Marina Development Area within the Hammond Redevelopment District.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair Lady.
Councilman Markovich.
I would like to be, have it be placed on as a sponsor in that lovely district.
All righty, Clerk Golick, you have that? Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
This is procedural, this is a preliminary step that we need to do before the incentive package, when it's finally approved by the administration and by the developer, we'll bring the incentive package before you all for a final approval. So this is, if we're gonna have an incentive package that includes TIF districts, this is a step we must take in order to go that direction. So without this, we can't put the incentive package together. And if you have any questions, I got Mr. Dawkins here, on behalf of the data center, he came up from Carmel for this meeting, that's why I wanted to let him get out of here before we had a long debate. So I appreciate you guys doing that.
All righty. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Eighteen R forty-one passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I'm moved, do we go back to regular order of business?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Spatelli to return to the regular order of business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Eighteen, or, uh, resolution, what were we on?
Eighteen R thirty-nine.
Eighteen R thirty-nine, it has been read in its entirety and made, the motion has been made and seconded, seconded. Heard the arguments of my colleague here, and all I'll say is, I remember when we closed this court, and I remember almost each and every, every one of these members of this council looked at the mayor and said, hey, when a job opportunity opens up, we are gonna open up a position for people that are losing their jobs because of the closure of the court. And we wanted to hold the mayor to a standard that it appears to me, maybe I'm reading this wrong, I mean, it sounds to me like we wanna hold the mayor to a certain standard of hiring the people that are losing their job, but we don't wanna be held to that same standard. And actually, if you read this resolution, all it does is take an obstacle out of, out of the way when it comes time to discuss, which, this is just my opinion, but the secretary's position to me, in my opinion, is a presidential decision. I don't think it should be discussed on the floor, I think we're having a special meeting to discuss the issues that this council voted, agreed to have an executive session about it, and if we wanna take up further the discussion on whether or not who should or shouldn't get it, I think it should be discussed that night. All this resolution says we're willing to make the exception should we choose one that is losing their job. I don't know why there has to be a big argument on that, we're just saying, are we willing to make this exception if we give one? If we do for one what we were willing to, make the mayor promise us he'd do? And that is, give the people losing their job preference first. I think it'd be hypocritical if we have the opportunity to do it and we don't even leave the door open for us to do it. That's, the, the decision aside, all this does is allows us to choose one if we so choose.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
You know, my problem with this is that we're making an exception for one person. Their other city employees had applied for the same position and we're not giving them the chance. Nobody gave this council, Councilman Warple thinks is a presidential decision, that's not in writing anywhere that I know of. All a councilman president does is preside over meetings and make sure the meetings are run in an orderly process. I haven't read anything and I looked where it says, gives her the power to hire and fire people. She has the power to hire, she also has the power to fire. But this does open a can of worms. One exception, other people are gonna apply for the same thing and we're gonna be bombarded with making exceptions. There's a meeting coming on the twentieth to properly, I believe, discuss this. As far as somebody being qualified, we have a secretary that has been doing an awesome job as, as her work as a part-time secretary, she had it filled in for the executive, well, the administrative secretary. She, the president here, I understand, interviewed certain people, but other were cast to the side. We were not giving, the rest of the council was not giving the opportunity to do that. And I believe, me, I campaigned just as hard for this position and I represent a district, I should have it said so, and to, uh, who, who works in this council office. Now, if I can get four other councilmen who are agreed with me, then let it be, whoever gets the five votes, but it should be the entire council.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I'm gonna go back to my original comment and the question is, a lot of what you're talking about, I think we're gonna be talking about that in executive session, personnel issues. All this is saying is, are we willing to make that exception? It's a simple question. If we pass it, it says, okay, we're willing to make that exception. If we deny it, then we're saying, okay, we're not gonna hold ourselves to the same, same standard we wanted to hold the mayor to a year ago. That's all, it's simple, it's that simple.
Madam Chair.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You know, going back to, I wanna address a couple of points I've heard so far, Councilman Torres and Councilman Warple both. I, as the executive, we hire, okay? This is a council position, so for me to hire a council secretary doesn't seem right. So the only way I know how to do business, when it's one of the two spots in the city that work for the Hammond City Council, is to go to the council president, who's the person you all elected to make these types of decisions, and they don't become vacant very often. Now, the council president told me who she wanted for this position and isn't the course we went through, okay? So there were other people that put in.
Person too.
But, but you're not the council president, and I, and I'm looking for advice here, how do I deal with this situation? Cause I don't think it's right for the mayor to hire the council secretary, which is, we hire people in the city, ninety-nine percent of them, but this is one of your employees. So the way I look at this resolution may be a little bit different than Councilman Warple looked at it. I thought this was for a certain employee that we all talked about beforehand. I'm pretty, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's why this resolution was floated, was for that employee. The way I look at it, that employee is being discussed right now, the one I was approached with, I'm sure we all know who we're talking about, we're leaving the employee's name out of it, it's an employee that lives in Highland. She's worked for the city for over twenty years, okay? If this is shot down, the way I look at it, that employee can't take this position. That's the way I look at this resolution. I don't know if that's different than the way you all are looking at this. If you say no, that's out of the question in this case, as far as I'm concerned, and, and I'll wait until I hear further orders from the Hammond City Council on who that employee is gonna be, okay? I just, this is a tough situation for me, cause I respect, I respect the council, this is your employee.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Since I've been on the council, I've seen all kinds of things take place and it's, it bothers me. I believe in treating people fairly across the board. It doesn't matter what color you are, where you live, none of that is important, it's about treating people fairly across the board. The ordinance simply says that you must live in Hammond. Why would we defer from what the law says to make a exception for one particular person? And we have other people that are interested in this position. Not only that, I think it's disrespectful that a person has served in this capacity as secretary and she be overlooked. It's not fair. And I'm about what's right and I have to live with myself. So if you are comfortable with saying it's okay with you, when I know, and I don't have nothing against nobody on this council, but some of the things that have occurred and happened to me, being the only African American on this council, it's absurd, but I have to live with it because I took the torch to lead. But it's about being fair. That's it, being fair.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair Lady. Madam Chair Lady.
Councilman Markovich.
Back in two thousand and three, we had an election for city offices, and there was this young expiring person wanting to be mayor in the City of Hammond, and his name was Tom McDermott. And one of the things he campaigned on is that there was seven to ten department heads that did not live in the City of Hammond. And obviously, that's what got him elected, because he was sticking up for Hammond people. He approached me in November and earlier and we discussed it, and that's how we came up with ordinance eighty-six twenty, which I am the sponsor, along with Kathleen Pasalic. And we put that in there. You have to live here to be an employee. Eighty thousand people, you know how many calls we get, people asking for a job for the city? Could you please do something? You know, get me a job, you know, we're hurting and this and that. You know, we just had a building commissioner retire, sold his house in less than a week and moved out to Crown Point. We had a police chief who retired, moved out of Hammond and moved to Valparaiso, and he's still receiving money from the City of Hammond as a, as a consultant or investigator or whatever. I mean, it, it has to stop, you know? And when we talked about this two to four weeks ago, it was brought up in caucus and Councilwoman Kalwinski brought it up, cause Councilwoman Vanez said, well, how are we gonna handle this? And Councilwoman Kalwinski says, well, we'll handle it just like we did the other one. We take applications, we're gonna do interviews, and we'll vote by secret ballot, whatever. That's what we did to replace and hi- hire the second secretary, the girl that's in there now, which she applied for this position, which is called an administrative assistant, with a difference of almost nine to ten thousand dollars. Now, I don't know how you would feel, but if you were in there learning the job, know the job, and they brought somebody in that you had to train to teach them to do your job for ten thousand dollars more than you, you wouldn't like that. I don't think anybody here would like that. That's why we got all this uproar now in the United States over about fair and equal wages for women compared to men, because the women aren't getting it. And that's, I'm not even going there, but we all know that's what this election's all about and what's coming about. It's why you don't have all of these, a lot, a lot of male now, guys on the radio doing the news and everything else and all that, you got ladies doing the interviews at the sports, at the football games and everything. So, you know, and Councilman Spatelli, he's not here right now, but he works in the mills. When they have layoffs, you're either qualified to go to another department and take that, otherwise you're laid off no matter how much seniority you have. We had decided that we would interview for this position. We haven't had any interviews yet. And that's why I brought up under committee reports to have a committee meeting, executive meeting, after the next council meeting about personnel and litigation. Why three members of this council voted no is beyond me, because we're supposed to be fair and open-minded and collect any and all information. Why they voted no, you're gonna have to ask them yourselves, cause I don't, I don't know why. Now, it's being said that we shouldn't discuss this now because we're having this meeting, but yet those three people voted no to have that meeting. So I guess maybe they wanna have that meeting here now, I don't know, but we're gonna present the information here now. I asked for a job, City of Hammond job description, or not job description, but an application for employment. I asked the personnel director, hey, give, give me the things. She delivered the job applications to our council secretary, and she says, what are you supposed to do with them? I says, well, we got them here. I says, no, you give it back to Sharon Daniels. All the people that applied for this position, I want it filled out. I wanna know what their background is, I wanna know what their education is, I wanna know what their work experience is. We get a file, and it's just a big thing, I wanna be council administrative secretary, but there's no, there's no information, no resume, no nothing. You know, I work in this other department, I'm a clerk someplace else, I want your job now. I'm an administrative in inspections, I wanna be in the council office because it pays more money, you know? Somebody's a customer service, they talk to people coming and paying their bills in the water department, but they wanna be an administrative assistant for ten, fifteen thousand dollars more. Same thing, police department records clerk, you know? If I was building a garage or a house, don't you think I would go ahead and talk to several builders, what's your background, your education, show me the houses you built? But now we're finding out that this, it's already been selected, and this is like the first I'm being told about it, that they've already picked somebody without the interviews, without no background, no education, nothing to tell us or anything in that respect. How do we know what we're getting? We don't. You know, if, I don't know where it comes up where the president has this authority, that's just one person, one vote, but yet we didn't, she did not do that when we hired this other girl, but now all of a sudden, it's her right that she says she doesn't have to talk to all of us and get our opinion, like we did for interviews for the other one, but takes it upon herself just to do it by herself and that's it. That's why I set it up to have this committee on the twentieth, we need to go through the interviewing process, because I'm already being told, even though this is a resolution, it carries no weight. You still have a city ordinance that says you must live in the city. Now it's being brought up that this girl that they wanted to give the job to doesn't live in the city, I'd like to know, how in the hell is she still working here if she doesn't live in the city? working here if she doesn't live in the city? She may have been grandfather in her position now that she has, but it also says in the ordinance, when they change positions to another thing, they're not protected anymore.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
She was grandfathered in. She's been working for the city longer than I've been the mayor.
Correct. Grandfather in that position.
When we passed our residency ordinance, if we would have fired everybody that didn't live in the city, we would have been sued, and we would have been in trouble. So, we decided the best course of action, which I thought was very smart at the time, was to grandfather everybody in place, and say, you can't move. You're stuck, basically. If you're in a clerk's office, you're in the clerk's office forever. If you're in the council office, you're in the council office forever. If you're in the law office, you're in the law office forever, until you move back to Hammond.
That's what you're saying, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a decision we made at the time. So, this employee, if this resolution is not passed, will be probably part of the employees that are cut at the end of the year. And that's fact. I'm not trying to persuade you one way or another. I'm just telling you fact.
Okay, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You've already given your explanation and everything.
Mm-hmm.
You said you didn't want to get involved in.
I'm not.
You keep coming up.
No, I'm clarifying. You, when you say, why is she still working for us? I have to respond to that. I don't want it to seem like.
Well, that's not you.
We follow this ordinance religiously, Councilman.
I, I asked for, I asked for the employment thing from Sharon Daniels to be filled out. Now, when these employees fill this out, it'd be interesting to see what address they put down. And if we request your driver's license.
I imagine.
Your car registration, your NIPSCO bill, you know, your 1099 or W-2 form that's sent out from the city. We can request all of that. We'll see what addresses are given on these people.
It's fine. You can do whatever you want.
Like you said, as long as that person stays in that position. But once they're moving out, they, they don't have that grandfather no more.
She cannot move out. By the way, can we change ordinances? Do, can we amend ordinances and do one-time exemptions? We do it almost every year with our budget. This is almost the same thing we do with our budget. Like, we split the gaming revenues different than our original ordinance said. This year, shared 10%, only got 5%. It was supposed to get 10%. The mayor only got 22% instead of getting 30%. The council people, the districts, got a little bit more this year. How did we do that? We did it because in our budget, we do a one-time exemption. So, this isn't very much different than we do with our budget, being honest with you. We're saying, if this is passed, the residency ordinance stays in place, except for this one-time employee transfer. If you guys don't pass it, I'm going to go to sleep fine tonight. If you guys do pass it, I'm going to go to sleep fine tonight. This is not the executive's issue. This is a council issue. And I don't know who to deal with. I can't deal with nine of you when we have open spots. And I don't care if it gets filled or not. I'll be honest with you. It doesn't matter to me. I'm still going to be able to work tomorrow, and I'm still going to be able to take phone calls and send out correspondence. This is on you guys.
Mayor, in no respect to you, I.
No, I'm not trying to be disrespectful at all, Councilman.
This is ours.
Yes, sir. This is the council's position. I agree.
Markovich, the mayor has the floor.
This is a council position. I agree totally. That's why I'm, I instruct my staff when it comes to council business, like positions, like board appointments, like employees, we stay the heck out of it. But I have to fill this spot. You can't fill this spot. None of you can, because I'm the executive. So, how do I handle that position? Do I come in and say, this is your employee? No, I'm not going to do that, because I have a relationship with you all. The only thing, and I've made the decision, I'm not trying to put the councilwoman on the spot. I approached her. She's the designated leader of this Hammond City Council. She's the council president. When she says, this is what we're doing, I say, no problem, councilwoman. This is what we have to do.
Mayor, what we're finding out, not, what we're finding out is, she is.
Councilman, ask for the floor, please.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Um, just for clarification, I, I just want to say this, that sometimes people can be in a position of power and abuse their authority. And I, again, I, I just don't think it's fair that you don't allow the different people that apply within our city for the position, and not give them opportunity, just like any.
You're talking to me?
Anyone else. I, I mean, that goes for my colleagues and anyone that's listening. It's about being done fairly. And I think the best suggestion that came about last time is how we interviewed, the interviewing process that Councilman Kowinski came up with. And we interviewed each individual, and had an opportunity.
God bless.
To ask them questions and get answers from them, that were interested in the position.
Madam Pres, Madam President.
And again, I mean, to me, I don't know, I can't speak for all of my colleagues. I can only speak for me. But a secretary is very important, because I address a lot of concerns throughout my district all the time.
Yes, sir.
And I work constantly for the betterment of my district and the city. So, different department heads receive correspondence from me on a regular basis. But again, one of the things that was brought up is the fact that we have someone there that's been working in that capacity, and to not allow her to continue in that capacity and give the job to someone else, I just feel is, is not fair.
Madam Chair.
That's how I feel.
Yes.
One last thing. I just want to point out, I don't think Councilwoman Vinesz was abusing her power at all. I think Councilwoman Vinesz is trying to move forward and take care of business. That's my impression. I'm not a council person, okay? I just want to point out, I don't think, I think it's natural, if you have a council president, that that person's the one that deals with the executive when it comes to filling a council position. I imagine, maybe you asked Councilman Hamm, who's the president of the Lake County Council, how they conduct business there, as a guide. I just, I don't know who to do business. I can't do business with nine of you, so I call the council president. That's what I do.
Madam President.
That's all I got. Thanks, guys. Have fun.
Councilman Rayco.
Call for the vote.
Madam President.
Madam President.
Uh, Clerk Golick-Rolkow.
Madam Chairlady.
Markovich.
Uh, you know, in regards to what the mayor said, that, you know, he went through the president.
There's a call for the vote.
Councilman Markovich, you're out of order. The vote has been.
Motion to table this resolution. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to table this. Clerk Golick-Rolkow, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
No.
Rakels.
No.
Vinesz.
No. Motion carries, five in favor, uh, five opposed, four in favor. Uh, Clerk Golick-Rolkow, vote please, on the, uh, resolution.
Wait a minute, that was the resolution.
Point of order.
That was the resolution.
No, no, point of order. The motion fails. It needs two-thirds.
The resolution has been tabled.
Yep.
It's been tabled?
Yep.
Okay, it needed two-thirds? Okay. Alrighty, good deal. Alrighty, moving on to Resolution 18R40.
Item C, Resolution 18R40, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. A resolution authorizing the Hammond Police Department to apply for a 2019 Indiana Criminal Justice Grant.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman, uh, Spatelli.
Move for final passage of 18R40.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Higgs, for final passage of 18R40. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, this resolution is to authorize the police department to receive the pullover grant of $108,625. That consists of seat belts, drunk driving, and aggressive driving. Thank you.
Alrighty, any discussion on Resolution 18R40?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to be at as a co-sponsor of this particular.
Alrighty, Clerk, Clerk Golick-Rolkow, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes. Uh, 18R40 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vinesz, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Alrighty, moving on.
Madam President, can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
For future dealings, when it comes to issues like this with the council, what if, in this case, it had been a Hammond resident, and the council president approached the mayor's office and said, this is who I want? Am I not supposed to fill it?
No, because you know what? Ms. Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Mark.
Is it an honest question?
We set a precedence when we filled the other one. We all talked together. We all did the interviews, and we all voted on.
So, from now on, when we fill spots, you're going to give me like a resolution or something?
I'm sorry, what?
When, in the future, when this kind of stuff comes up? I'm asking, because I don't want to over-set my bounds with the legislative branch.
Madam President.
So, if there's open board spots, if there's open anything, the council president, whoever that person is, if it's Councilwoman Vinesz, or any of the other people sitting before me, doesn't have any power, right?
Madam President.
Councilman Warple.
I will answer Councilman Markovich's question, why, why one of us did voted not to table it, or, I'm, I'm sorry, voted not to have a executive session, explain themselves why they didn't have to, because everybody at this council knows, we can't vote on anything in an executive session. So, we didn't vote on nothing last year. Yet, my colleague wants to say, oh, yeah, we all had a discussion, and we voted. It's not legal to vote in an executive session on anything, is it?
I don't think so.
So, there's no way we could have voted. We all know that, right?
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Torres.
In that caucus executive session, we had an agreement, though, which way we were going to go. That way, it wasn't discussed on the floor. So, it was kind of an agreement. And, I, again, I looked it up. Maybe you know something I don't know, or, but were the council president has that kind of authority without the consensus of at least five councilmen? I, I like to see that in writing somewhere, not just, uh, your assumption.
Okay. I won't fill anything. I don't care. Just don't even fill the spot. I don't care. This doesn't bother me a bit. I just want to point that out. This thing could never get, like.
You, you recuse.
Because you, no, no, no. You guys, as council people, can't hire anybody. You can't. You could tell me to hire. I don't have to hire it, okay? I'm the executive. We do the hiring. So, you vote for a council president, and I do business with that person, and you tell me you can't do that. Okay? I mean, what do I do? Am I supposed to call you, Councilman Torres?
You wrote on, you gave us a note that you did not hire for the legislative.
I don't. That's why I'm here.
Why, so, why are you?
Asking who to do business with?
Yeah.
Asking, what am I supposed to do in the future when stuff like this comes up? Yeah, it's an honest question. I thought, doing business with the council president was a.
You're the executive, and we're the legislative.
Okay.
So, we should have power over our own employees. We only have two.
Okay.
No, council, council president.
Uh, Warple.
Last I checked, we were the fiscal body. I don't think we can get into who we hire and who we fire when any department head job comes open. The mayor doesn't come to us and go, hey, can I hire these guys, guys? Or can I hire this person, guys? So.
Madam Chair.
We elected you as our council president. The decision's yours.
No.
Madam Chair.
Yes, this is your mayor.
There's a vacancy in the city clerk's office. Do you think I call Bob Golick up, and I say, Clerk Golick, I want you to hire this person? I don't. He's an elected official. He makes his own decisions. And then, it goes through the personnel office. When I go with the judge's office, if there's a vacancy in the judge's office, I don't call Judge Amy and say, Judge Amy, I got the perfect person for you. Judge Amy makes the decision. She sends it to personnel. We process it. There's nine of you. There's nine of you.
Madam Chairman.
Yeah.
Madam President.
Not one, equally, nine.
Okay.
Madam President.
I need to hear from all nine of you, who to hire, okay?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, the reality of it is, I think when the assistant secretary that was hired, I was not even informed she was going to be hired, and we were getting another secretary in our office. So, no one even contacted me in regards to that. And then, and on a number of occasions there, things have taken place within the office that I haven't been notified of, are circumvented from, uh, being brought to the forefront. Some of this stuff is ridiculous. For one example is the reality of promotional accounts. It was, seems as though, because me wanting to get training, additional training, and being more effective in learning, uh, in my capacity as a councilman, that money was taken away. Those are the things that are important, and should be important to all of us, to be informed and know, uh, what's available, and what resources can be utilized in your capacity as a councilman. That's what's important to me. I can't speak for everyone. But those are the things that I look at, in terms of addressing. We have a budget that could be very well decided amongst us if we work together. But somehow, another, it's being dictated as though this is what's going to be done, and this is how we should do it. And I don't think it's right. But again, I'm only one of nine, so. But, again, as I stated before, and I'll state it again, is that I feel as though an individual that's been in, working in that capacity, that's learned the job, should be, have an opportunity to apply for it, and not just select someone just because they're losing their job.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairlady.
Uh, it, Councilman, who was that?
Me.
Markovich, who's the councilman?
You know, I know the mayor's in a dilemma, and, you know, he, he wants to stay out of it, and, and respect him. But, you know, he, he sent us the file of everybody that applied, and on the front, he says, please give copies to all the councilmen. This position isn't a job filled by the executive. It is not a position filled by the executive, okay? So, he's saying that. He said he talked to her, but what we're finding out, with, with her, she's not relaying any and all information to us as individuals. Maybe a certain few might be getting the information, but all of us are not getting the information. I mean, it just behooves you to figure out that, if you're going to hire somebody, everybody's got to be consensus. We have a democratic society. We have a democratic administration here. Everybody's invited to vote. Everybody has to say so. Nobody's not, everybody, nobody's not left out. But that's what happened in this situation. Several of us were being left out. Now, it's a matter of semantics, because we're going to have an executive session about personnel and litigation, whether we can or can't discuss that, that there, or going to vote on somebody. Well, maybe we need another meeting for interviews. And I plan to take, take care of that on a new and unfinished business. Well, we'll take care. Well, we'll still have our executive and personnel and litigation, because we're going to be looking at problems here, you know? Yes, it shouldn't have been brought out here, but it's being brought out here because a resolution was put forth. What any of us know about it, except for a few? You don't want to bring out your dirty laundry out here.
That's exactly what happened.
Now, 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 it's, now, it got opened up, the dirty laundry's being brought up because a resolution was put out there. She is one vote, one vote equally, times nine, nine different votes. Nobody has all that power. She does not have the power to say who's going to build my house, or my garage, or whatever. I want to see who the hell's qualified to do it. Madam.
Any other?
It doesn't work that way in industry, but I guess what you can say, it's called politics. It's called politics.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski. I think, uh, Councilman Markovich has exhausted the topic.
All right.
Yes.
So, this should have been done behind closed doors, first off. Second, the mayor did what he was supposed to do and go to our president. That's correct. Then, if you follow precedent, nine of us who will be working with the administrative assistant would be in the process for interviewing, questioning, and coming to some consensus on our pick. That's how this should have went. Now, here we are, bickering because we didn't do this behind a door to iron this thing out, or because we all weren't approached ahead of time about this selection. So, now we'll have to go back behind closed doors, figure this out, and figure out what went wrong. And, Mayor, continue to go to the president. That's what you do. President goes to the council, I thought. That's what they do. That didn't happen. Consequently, we're going back, and we're going to talk.
Madam Chair, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
That sounds perfect. Much, obviously, we're not ready to go forward on this. I'll wait to hear further instructions on what to do with this vacancy from the council president. Sound good?
Madam President.
Sounds good. We couldn't even agree on committee meeting dates sometimes.
Okay. But I'm just saying, so like, until I hear from Councilwoman Vinesz on who's going to fill this spot, we'll continue just to monitor.
Madam President.
New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression.
Whoa, we still have unfinished business.
You can't, we have other stuff.
I just closed it.
How, you can't just close new and unfinished business and have it called three times?
You didn't call three times.
You didn't call three times.
I did too. I.
No, you did not. No, you did.
Okay. Let's, uh, is there a motion to return to new and unfinished?
I'm going to make that motion that we return to new and unfinished business.
Councilman Higgs, is there a second?
Second.
Alrighty, second by Councilman Markovich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Alrighty, new and unfinished business.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
See how polite I am and professional? I always say madam president. I'd like a letter sent to Dean Button, I recently had a meeting with the residents of Tanglewood in regards to, um, building a sidewalk from Tanglewood all the way to Indianapolis Boulevard. There's currently no sidewalk there, and they are interested in the safety of the children. And having that meeting, that was one of the topics that were, was brought out, and I discussed it with the mayor, and so Dean is here, and I would also, a letter being sent to Dean Button, our city engineer, so that he can work on that, and if you need funding, I'm available to give you the resources that's needed. Thank you so much. That's a motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, was that?
Yep.
Yes, uh, to send a letter to Dean Button regarding sidewalks at Tanglewood. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Just for clarity, it's not on private property, it's on, we want to make sure that it's surveyed, and, uh, the surveyor looks at what's owned by the city and it's on legal property, we don't want anything to be posted as though we're interested in building this sidewalk on private land, we want it on the public land, and Dean is here, so we wanted to be clear that that's what we're interested in, so that it's easy access to our wonderful sports complex that the, me and the mayor was, had the good opportunity of recently cutting the rim and allowing the great citizens of Hammond to enjoy. So thank you so much.
All righty, uh, you should've been clear on that in your original request. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to have a letter sent to Sharon Daniels, um, HR, Personnel Director, whatever her title is, having her have everybody that had applied for a job in the city council office for administrative assistant or secretary, fill out a job application, and the following people are Susan Alexander.
Councilman, do you want to give people's names?
Lisa Cardenas.
Uh, Councilman, do you want to give people's names, uh, over the-
It's public record, it's public-
Point of order.
Go right ahead.
Point of order.
Lisa J. Cardenas.
Point of order. Point of order.
It's not, okay, it's not public record, so no.
Point of order.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President, initially, when a councilman or your colleague requests a point of order, you should acknowledge them and not go around them. I'm not done, Councilman Vinesse. Councilwoman Vinesse, I'm not done. So in respect to that, if you would please understand to be respectful like I'm respecting you, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
I will respect.
Now, again, as I stated previously, that's the process. If a point of order is called, you answer to the point of order.
Thank you.
Yes, it is, Councilman Rakos.
Thank you.
From the sixth district.
So, Councilman Higgs, what is your point of order?
My point of order is that Councilman Markovich had made a, uh, point, and you continued to talk, when you, as the president of the Hammond City Council, according to Robert's Rules of Order, you're supposed to actually step down when you have anything, any discussion as it relates to any matters of the council.
Ooh.
That's the Robert Rules of Order.
All right, Councilman Markovich.
Madam-
I was just saying, I don't think-
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Point of order, Councilman Markich has, Markovich has a motion on the floor, so I think we need a second, correct?
Uh, yes, 'cause he was requesting a letter, and that's when I interrupted him about the names that he was giving. Uh, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Torres, for, uh, a letter to be sent to Sharon Daniels to, uh, ask all of the applicants for the job to come in and fill out an application.
I think there's ten of them, if, if it's a matter of-
There were eleven.
Whatever.
There were eleven.
Okay, so if it's a matter of semantics, where, whether it's public record or not, I don't know, who's gonna make that decision?
Okay.
Madam President.
Uh, we're not gonna announce everyone's names right now.
That's fine, as long as we get-
So we'll send a letter to Sharon Daniels, asking the eleven applicants for the administrative assistant position to come into the office and complete an application. Uh, and, uh, that was motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Torres, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is that an aye, is the, you're opposed, or an i that you're, you're opposed, okay. Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please, on the letter to-
A point of clarification. Madam Chairlady, her-
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
They have to go to the personnel office and fill out the job description. If the job descrip, if the job description is, or, application, application, I'm sorry, employment application, if they do not submit an application for employment for this position, they will not be considered.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Then why are we sending a letter asking for who filled out the applications? Because they have to, you're just, I'm not arguing with, I'm not arguing with my colleague, could you please ask my colleague why we are sending a letter for something he says they've already done?
Madam President.
Uh, Councilman, can I just ask for a roll call vote, please?
No, because he has missed-
You know what?
Madam President, Mr. Warple does not seem to understand, we do not have all the information of people that applied. All they said was, was a bid, I want to be your administrative assistant. No job, app, employment application was submitted, no resume was submitted, it's just like I said earlier, if you're gonna build a garage or a house, you're gonna want to know who in the hell's building and what their qualifications are.
Let's take the roll call.
Okay, uh, Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please, on a letter to Sharon Daniels, uh, to send a letter to all the applicants to have them come in, fill out an application with the resume, name, rank, and serial number. All righty.
Address, too.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Spitali?
Yes.
Uh, are you voting yes on this, or no? A letter that he wants sent to Sharon Daniels to have all the applicants come in to fill out an application, I'm just reiterating-
Seems like you're trying to change his mind.
I'm, I'm just reiterating, he-
Rest. I like the book.
Okay.
The book's got eye control.
Okay. Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please, on the letter that Councilman Markovich requested to Sharon Daniels to ask all of the eleven applicants for the administrative assistant position to, uh, come in and complete an application, along with a copy of their resume. Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
City of Hammond employment application, clarification.
I'm sure Sharon has that, thank you.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Nope.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vinesse.
Oh, sure, why not? All righty, eight in favor, one opposed.
Madam Chair. I want to thank-
Motion carries.
I want to thank the council again for moving the data center before-
Yeah, really.
It's fun to say thank you, I appreciate it very much.
That was a good idea, Mayor.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Who was asking?
I did.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, Mayor, again, I want to thank you for, uh, sitting through this meeting in regards to addressing some of the concerns of the city, and one of them that you brought to, uh, my colleagues' attention is the fact that you are the executor over the city, and certainly, we can't hire anyone in any department without going through you. I do believe in chain of command, and I don't have a problem with people approaching the council president and bringing them ideas and suggestions, but I feel it's only fair that she shares them with me and my colleagues. That's the problem I have with that.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Got it, Councilman. You understand, I'm in a predicament when it comes to dealing with the council, I go to the council chair. Whether that's wrong or right, that's what I thought I was supposed to do, so I apologize if I caused a big fight, I didn't mean to.
Okay.
Madam-
Any other-
Madam Chairwoman.
President.
Madam President.
Yes.
Again, earlier, I was one of them that voted no on this, and I was asked to explain why, and basically because of the last hour? And guess what, we get to do it again, because we can't vote in executive session, I just want to remind people that.
Right, okay. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Since Attorney Burgess is here, I'm, I will, uh, request that he get his, we get his opinion in regards to, uh, not allowing those other individuals to go through the hiring process in terms of interviewing them, and whether we're setting ourselves up for future litigation in concerning, uh, being sued if they're not given an opportunity to apply and at least interview for this position.
Madam Chair. Just like, just like every job that's available in the city, we already went through the process, as far as, we have a process where every job that's open, we post it citywide for a period of five days, and all employees have an option to put in first, and that's where we stopped, because quite frankly, there was, I think, four or five at least that put in for this job.
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you, I didn't want to guess, eleven to put in for this job, so I don't think we need to go outside of the city to fill this job. So we've already complied with the internal requirements we need to do, you have the option right now as a council to hire any of those eleven right now, and you also have the option, because we've satisfied all prerequisites, to go out externally and hire a Hammond resident, okay? That's your options right now as a council, you've already satisfied everything internally that needs to be done, we've already done that, we posted it, it was posted for the right amount of time, employees had a chance to bid on it first, which is what our ordinance calls for, okay? So the next, next thing I know, we'll fill it, once I get Councilwoman Vinesse to come forward and say, this is who we're filling it with, okay?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What if we feel that none of them are qualified, and we can go out and get better people?
You have that right.
With better qualification, college degree or something like-
You have that right, Councilman.
Know how to do Microsoft and-
You have the right to go outside of the city, we've already satisfied all requirements, you have to give employees the first bid, first chance, we did that, you have those eleven apps from the employees, you have the right to hire any of those eleven, or any of the other eighty-one thousand Hammond residents.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All righty, any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Seeing as you're the president of the council, what does that salary pay?
Which salary are you in reference to?
The executive secretary for our, for all nine of us, the one that the position is currently used.
Three hundred dollars, Councilman.
Oh, wow.
All righty, any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression.
God, I'm stressed.
Mary Ellen Slazek.
I don't know if I could tap all this, uh.
Thank you for waiting, uh, and you do need to state your name and address for-
I'm Mary Ellen Slazek, 517 Lewis Street, oh my goodness, um, there are laws for a purpose, there are ordinances for a purpose, these guidelines are for a purpose, uh, I sympathize with somebody losing their job, you know, twenty years, uh, my husband had lost a job years ago, he had been in a place twenty-one years, but the thing is, if this employee has been living outside of Hammond, and if they ever had a thought cross their mind, and maybe they wanted to advance, they would have to move to Hammond in order to advance within the city. Uh, you gotta look at that perspective, okay? So if they were here already twenty-some years working, they were not living in Hammond, well, sometimes you gotta look to the future and plan for the future, and I don't think they did. The ordinance is a good idea. Um, I think that people living in Hammond should get Hammond jobs, if not, uh, an employee that's within the system now that can maybe fill this position, somebody out there, there are so many people without jobs, a lot of qualified people, and they need the jobs. And I want somebody that, that lives here, that my tax dollars are gonna pay for, somebody not from out of town, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker is Rita Jackson.
Rita Jackson, Hammond, Indiana. I first want to thank the mayor for his, his economic genius, like, I mean, a lot of things I don't like about his personality, but, but he really gets the job done. I hope they don't take up too many minutes. Okay, two concerns, I hear a lot, uh, about the, um, god, what do they call, when you're making, you're paying people off, you do that publicly, what is it, claims, uh, I want to know how, you know, is it a, is, does it take up too much time to explain to the public on record what you're paying those claims for, and how much? And it, and if, if it's too long or whatever, how can a person like me obtain that? 'Cause, uh, I would like to know how, some of, you know, I mean, I don't have millions of dollars, but I'm a taxpayer, I, I would like to have access without political games if I want to ask for the information. Uh, also, the ordinance was made, and it is true, your campaign was ran on Hammond residents getting Hammond jobs, um, you have college students that Hammond is paying for to educate them, they deserve an opportunity to apply, I mean, you, you, people are, you, you're talking about bringing in someone who refuses to move here in Hammond. She refuses to move in Hammond, she had twenty years to become a citizen of Hammond, she had a city job, and to choose priority over that, that's not fair, it's not fair to Hammond residents, think about that. And then to say, we only gonna do, you can't say this is gonna be the only exception, because you either gotta change the ordinance, and if you're gonna say she's grandfathered in, and we're gonna allow transfers to be grandfathered in, or you gotta follow the ordinance, or you have to change it, because if I, if I, if I have someone who says, if I tell you my son is back in Indiana, and I want you all to consider him, and I want you to change the ordinance, and you tell me no, that's not fair, it's not gonna be fair to me, if you do it for one, you have to do it for all. And so I'm asking you all in your executive meeting to consider that, because fair is fair. If the law is not working, if the ordinance is not working, change it, but if you're not gonna change it, obey it, that's, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Public expression is now closed.
I think-
So motion to adjourn?
There was another lady that-
Another lady that approached.
Uh, she hadn't signed up.
But she approached the podium.
I'm sorry, okay. You come on, come right up. Stick your name and, uh, address for adjournment, please.
My name is Camelia Ridgell Robinson, um, 1137 Merrill Street, Hammond, Indiana, and as to feeding off of, Miss Rita, the mayor, I was under your father's administration, as you would know, remember, you are a genie. You've done the damn thing, that's what you did.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Now, I said, and he has done the damn thing, he is a businessman, and thank him that we have him to be the executor of our city of Hammond, but going now to the ordinance of the employment for the council, we're sending children to school through your college fund, I have daughters that have masters and can't even come to the city of Hammond and